With the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation in one land, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone here this evening. We do have an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda? Not operate under that agenda. Move to Agenda Number Two, which is to consider the approval of the minutes of a work session and the regular meeting. Both were held on July 23rd. Council does have the minutes of both of those meetings. Are there any corrections?
I recommend approval of the minutes.
Second motion by Jim, seconded by John to approve the minutes of both meetings as they have been presented. We'll move to a vote. Close the voting. The motion does pass. Move then to Agenda Item Number Three. This is a public hearing. This is a public hearing to, on the adoption of a five-year capital improvement plan and the issuance of general obligation capital bonds that are under. I'll call on Annette Star, her finance director. Annette?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The public hearing starts the bonding process for financing capital improvements to City Hall. Minnesota State Statute 475.521, Capital Improvement Bonds, gives municipalities the authority to issue capital improvement bonds to finance improvements for the purpose of City Hall's. The statute requires the following steps being taken. The municipality must publish a notice of its intent to issue the bonds and the date and time of the hearing at least 14, but not more than 28 days before the date of the hearing. At the July 23rd council meeting, council adopted a resolution calling a public hearing on the adoption of a five-year capital improvement plan and issuance of general obligation capital bonds for August 13th. The notice of the public hearing was published in the Marshall Independent on July 27th. A municipality may adopt a capital improvement plan that must cover at least a five-year period beginning with the date of its adoption. The facility's capital improvement plan that is included in the council packet covers the required sections listed in the state statute referenced. The resolution before you would authorize the beginning of the process of the capital improvement bonds to finance the acquisition, construction, and equipment of a new city hall in the maximum principal amount of $8 million. This number was reached after an estimate of $6.6 million for construction and furnishings provided to the city council at the July 9th work session, plus relocation costs, which include moving to and from a temporary location and two years lease payments, bond issuance cost, and then rounding up to achieve a maximum amount at the recommendation of financial advisors and bond council. I want to emphasize that this is the maximum amount that the CIP would allow bonds to be issued. Without having the bids received, a higher amount is needed to ensure the council has the discretion on deciding the level of bonding when more definite figures are received. If the resolution amount is lowered, it would restrict the direction the council could take, delaying the project, causing bonding to be postponed until 2020, potentially increasing the cost of the project. Issuance of bonding in 2019 is ideal to take advantage of low interest rates and remaining under that $10 million bank qualified status, which provides a lower interest rate. I do want to turn to the capital improvement plan that was included in the packet, and I did give an updated version as interest was incorrect on the previous version. On Page Seven, there's three different scenarios. One, the first one, at a $7 million bond issuance. The second scenario would be at the $6 million, and the third scenario would be at the $8. And if we kind of go down towards the bottom of that table, you can see the average annual debt payment as it is different in the three scenarios. So depending on where the bids would come back would determine where we would kind of fall for the bonding later in the process and setting the amounts. By approving this resolution, council is authorizing the financing of City Hall to begin. The final amount, as I said, will be approved later in the process. This resolution must be approved by two-thirds of members of council, which is five out of seven. Okay. I don't know if--
Thank you, Annette. Sharon, do you have anything you wanted to add before we go into questions that council may have or public, as part of this public hearing?
The amount that's in the resolution and the resolution itself is a procedural step in order to line up financing. The actual amount of the bond would be determined by the actual bids received, which we anticipate towards the end of October. At that particular time, the council would have a decision on whether or not to move forward with bonding. So this is just a procedural step to prep us for the next action to be taken.
Well, put up for input as part of the public hearing, either from the audience or members of the council?
I'm glad you pointed out the fact that the $8 million is the maximum amount. I mean, if we need to borrow less than that, we can borrow less than that. So we're not obligated to borrow the full $8 million. In the plan itself, it indicates City Hall $8 million expenditure. Again, that's, I guess, I'm not in favor of spending $8 million for a new City Hall. And, you know, it looks like it's part of our plan to spend $8 million. Does that $8 million amount have to be stated in there? Because I think the $8 million goes for things other than the actual construction costs, as you mentioned, right?
You just put it on that chart.
Correct. And it does have to match with what the resolution has. But that is just, like we have discussed, it's the maximum amount. Had we had the bids and been further along when we had this process, that amount would be lower or based on whatever the bids came back at.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Craig.
You know, and I think it's important when we go through this to think about the steps that we've taken, because we've actually, as a council and a community, taken a very long path to get where we are right now. And part of that was the discussion of the hotel, the discussion of do we keep it on Main Street or do we put it somewhere else? And so we've made a decision, and I think the right decision, to keep it on Main Street. Okay? There was a lot of community input. There was a lot of discussion about that. We knew that wasn't going to be the least expensive option. And with this comes a lot of costs, direct and indirect, that don't relate directly to City Hall. It's, again, relocating expenses, rental for two years, you know, hopefully we don't have to be out that long, but potentially we're going to be out of that location for two years. So there's a lot of other things that come into place for this that isn't brick and mortar of City Hall. And I think it's important to maintain a focus on that also, because if we just, if we look at the number, and as long, I've been on council for almost six years now, and this number's gone up quite a bit since we first talked about it even then, and it's not going to get less expensive, and for the people that have to work in that building, no matter whether we build new City Hall or not, I think we need to really think about, do we continue to make our employees work in that in its current condition? So I think we really need to start moving forward and getting this thing done. And I think we've got a pretty good plan here, so I hope that we can continue to move forward on this.
I would just add to what Craig said, and perhaps it goes without saying, but there's been a lot of staff work that has gone into at this point, plus a lot of effort by the city council and the planning committee, the City Hall Committee, that did a lot of discernment as far as the location and the facility and the plan. So, John?
Thank you. I'd just add a little bit to the history that Councilman Schaefer started on. You know, we did a study on this in 2009, and at that point, the estimates were about 2.8 million. We did another study in 2014. The estimates here came in at about 5.8. We're now at about 6.6. We're going up at a rate of about $600,000 a year. And granted, there's a lot of difference between the very first study, the recommendations there, and the 2014. I think we've made a lot of good changes in that, bringing floors to just one level, making it easy access, ADA compliant, letting in, a lot of things in that nature. But this thing is not getting cheaper. We didn't want to spend the money, and at times, for good reason, back then. But we've got to take this step now, and we've got to get this moving. This needs to get done. It's only going to get more expensive.
Other input as part of the public hearing?
My only concern with this is, and I'll side with Glenn on this one, is I've been told $6 million. I don't know, is what I, the number I've been throwing around, is $6 million, correct, Sharon?
Right. The $600,000 is furnishings, fixtures, and equipment. And we're not, I think there is a presumption that most of the furniture would need to be replaced. That is not the case. We need to provide the architect an inventory of furniture that we will utilize. We have fairly good office furniture. There may be some needs in some of our meeting space, but likely, it's a little bit high, and the actual building would be $6 million, not 6.6.
And my concern in this is when we say $8 million, but we're looking at a $6 million bill, why do we need to build in the $2 million cushion? I'm very uncomfortable with that, because that's, quite honestly, it's $150 for every man, woman, and child in the city of Marshall. And to build in that kind of cushion, I don't think is necessary. And I'm going to have a hard time supporting an $8 million. Somebody said we'll go $6.5 million. Sure, I'd support that. I mean, I'll be honest with you guys. I think $8 million going $2 million over what the builders rejected the cost is too much.
Sharon, you had a comment you wanted to make?
I do want to add that the architects stated to me, and we'll see how accurate they are, that the $6 million they felt would be on the higher end. They, as you know, we started out at $5 million, and we did delay it a year. Some of the costs that I think have concerns is maybe not fully anticipated by the architect, which is asbestos removal. We've had a brief discussion on that last week. Maybe that was factored into the $6 million. I'm not entirely sure. One of the things that comes up when you're doing destructive construction and demolition, which we are with the first floor, is you may come upon asbestos that wasn't discovered in the original inspection. And then the hotel next door as well, the $6 million does not include the demolition of the hotel next door. And the hotel, which we felt that there was a developer that potentially could work on that, our first developer that we worked with, we could not come to financial terms with that particular individual. We have since tried to work with two others. We don't have a deal yet on that hotel, and because of the timing of construction, we may end up still demoing that hotel. The cost of that could be $200,000. You'd have to pay the hole that's left behind. In addition, the streetscape, the view of both buildings, the adjacent buildings to the hotel may need some work, and it could be additional $200,000. And let me go farther back. We acquired the hotel through condemnation. We used TIF dollars to make that purchase. City council would need to technically pay back those TIF dollars. I think it was around another $200,000, unless the city council wants to write it off, which it could under resolution. So there are some unknowns there. I'm going to just estimate about $600-some thousand. And then, I'm not sure what the volatility of the bids will be when we get them back. So just wanted to explain that a little bit further on unanticipated costs. We don't know exactly at this point.
Thank you, Sharon. As part of the public hearing, James, you had a, what do you want to say?
I have a number of things I want to say. James Carr, concerned taxpayer. I think there needs to be a reality check on what the City Hall's costing the taxpayers and costing the general public. A common citizen thinks bonds are voted on, approved for a need. Once that need is met and the bonds are paid, that obligation goes away, not redirected to a payment stream. It should go to a payment to reduce the taxpayers' tax burden, not do a different payment stream on a different city project. The real estate reality check is a list of properties being taken off real estate tax line or being major reduction in value. The Ramada Hotel is up for auction. That currently pays $110,000 in real estate taxes. Once that goes on auction, whatever that value gets to be is going to trickle down to the other hotels, so their value is going to reduce. ACMC will turn into a nonprofit at some point. They now pay $324,000 in real estate taxes. ShopCo now pays $100,000 in real estate taxes. The former Lake Beverage Warehouse just sold this morning at $8 a square foot. That's going to trickle down to lower values in the industrial park, which is going to reduce the real estate taxes. The Marshall Golf Course, they now pay $31,000 in real estate taxes. The Marshall Square Mall, their tax bill's $131,000, and they're now $199,000 in back taxes. Farmland values are going down. You just had a store on Main Street close, Soulmates. All that's going to affect the tax burden on the citizens of Marshall. The cost of doing business in Marshall, reality check. We have a major project in the water treatment plant, which can be a significant rate hike in our water. We have a wastewater treatment plant that's a major re-project. The Marshall Public School System, what we voted on for a new school, it's just the tip of the iceberg. We know there's going to be more to come. We have the Marshall Aquatic Center coming up online. That's going to be another major project. And the projects that don't work so well, like the Red Baron Arena, everybody voted on what it was supposed to be, and now we're putting on a new parking lot that nobody thought of. City Hall does need something done to it. It's landlocked, parking restricted, it's not very functional, or non-functional. But spending $8 million won't fix the landlocked and the parking issues, and it may not fix the functionality of City Hall. What does $8 million get? Basically, we get two finished floors. Total square footage, 11,000 square feet. At $6 million, the low end of your estimates, that comes to $540 per square foot. At $8 million, that's $720 per square foot. Any construction cost estimate book will tell you that City Hall's would be half that You, as a city council, are supposed to be stewards of our money. You have a fiduciary responsibility. I ask you to act responsibly, understand you spent a lot of money on architects, engineers, and your own time. So go ahead, bid out the project, but don't approve money before you know a price tag. I use the council to vote no on this item. Any questions for me?
Thank you. Thank you. Russ?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Annette, just that you brought up that the bond would include relocation and rent expenses as well. Possibly include that?
At this time, we're including all of our costs that it would cost in order to do the City Hall, but when we get further down the process, we would be taking a look at what we can cash flow, so we don't have to build that into the bond, so--
Yeah, because I don't think that's a wise investment of city money to finance over a 20 or 30 year odd--
Correct.
Rent and relocation costs for a period of 24 months, maybe.
Right.
It just doesn't make sense to me.
Yes, it would be something we'll be taking look at further down the line.
All right. Thank you.
Other input? Any other input as part of the public hearing? I would entertain a motion. John?
It took me a second to find it here. Just a little correction, James, I think, in what you had for the square footage. You said 11,000 square feet?
Yeah, the first and second floor, the third floor is partially finished, I believe.
Okay, because just the building area that we've had in the studies was put at about 15,000, or 19,000 in the 14, so that might be the three fours, but--
The plans I got are 50 feet wide.
I just wanted to clarify that number, so--
Any other input as part of the public hearing? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote.
Who voiced vote to close the public hearing?
All those in favor of the motion to close the public hearing signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion passes. We'll now consider the adoption of the resolution for the capital improvement plan and issuance of the general obligation bonds. And you have that resolution. Questions about the resolution? Not what are the wishes of the council?
I'd make a motion to approve the resolution.
Motion by John. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Craig. If not, we'll move to a vote on that motion. Close the voting? And the--
I have all votes in. Yours.
Okay. Can we open the voting again?
I can put it for you if you'd like.
What's that?
I can insert for you if you'd like.
Yeah, it would be aye, but, okay. So regardless, that motion does not pass. Is there an alternate motion?
I would make an alternate motion of the bond at $6.5 million.
Resolution as it is with the number at $6.5 million. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by, was that Craig? Seconded by Craig. Discussion?
The reason I would pick that number is that's the number we've been talking about. It's not putting fluff out there. It is, we're going to have to stick to the budget, which I think is good as a council. It does leave some contingency, so if the bids do come in a little bit higher, you know, there may be a tariff that comes up in December that we don't know about. You know, something could change, so there is some buffer there. But I think it helps us as a council and lets the citizens know that we are going to stick to the $6 million that we've been talking about since this project started a year and a half ago, two years ago.
And I think the other thing that it does do, the comfort that I have in supporting that motion with a second, is the fact that, you know, we've talked about while the $8 million is the swag high dollar for everything, and we've talked about furnishings, and we've talked about, you know, cash flow and doing it without using bond money for the relocation and rental. So my hope is, is that we can do the legitimate project adequately and fully at the 6.5, and we'll find out when we come to bids.
Other discussion on the motion? John?
I'm concerned at the 6.5, that we don't have, you know, any contingency in there, or enough contingency to cover some things. You know, I'd be probably comfortable with seven, but 6.5, I think we're cutting it too close, and I don't know what the plan would be if we do have more steel costs than what we are. Steel has not gone down. What, you know, we've got some special cutting that needs to be done on the floor to get it there, that we don't know exactly what it is, but I guess I'm concerned about cutting it too close, and then what's our plan if we, if it comes in over?
You know what the architect has been saying is this should come in at about 5.5, 2.6 million, so that leaves us over 10%, which I think is more than adequate on a building project.
Other discussion on the motion?
Again, I don't, I mean, we're talking about 5.6 or $7 million, but again, we have no idea, because we haven't even put this project out for bids.
Right.
I mean--
Really a not--
We're gambling, we're gambling with the interest rates, because right now, they're low, they could be lower, they could be higher in two months when we get the estimates for the project. I just have, myself, I have a problem okaying something or spending up to $7 million, and we don't know what the project's going to cost. We have no idea.
Really, all you're establishing is a not-to-exceed number.
That's correct. I mean, we've been told by the architects it's 5.5, and that might be on the high side. Well, what if it comes in at 7 million? We don't know.
And I think if it comes at 7 million, we go back to the architect and say, we need to cut stuff out. We need--
Sharon?
Yeah, the two bigger decisions with City Hall will be, do you want to authorize bid letting? That will come back to council, and you'll do an authorization. And then the second big decision would be, do you accept the bids that were received or bid? Do you accept a bid that was received? Those are the two decision factors where you will actually determine how much we spend. It is not this resolution. This is just setting the table for two decisions to come in the future.
Any other discussion on the motion?
I have a question for, just out of point of clarity and not out of debate, Councilman Labatt. So are you defending 6.5, or are you asking for 7 million?
I'm not defending either one at this point.
Okay, it's just point of discussion. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to be clear.
I just don't, I mean, it's like our own homes. You know, we're going to do a remodeling project, we're going to do something, we're going to get probably one or two or maybe even three bids.
Right.
You know, right now, we don't even have one bid. We have an architect's estimate.
But what we've done here is that we've said that if this comes in at 6.7, we don't go forward, because we don't have the money. So we have said that if this doesn't come in, we are not doing anything to City Hall. That's what we're saying with this.
Correct. That's how I understand it, too.
And I respectfully agree with councilmembers Labatt and Lozinski. You know, it's, when we sit at our own house, we figure out how much we have to spend, we negotiate the best deal, and we don't go above that. If we have to go back to the drawing board or wait or things like that, because Mr. Carr made a very fine example. You know, there's a lot of things coming into Marshall, and we don't know things, and it's getting, we don't want to raise taxes more, and we all know, we've seen it, that Marshall, compared to cities of like size, we're in the ballpark right now. But we certainly don't want to become the leader of the pack. So let's think about that when we make these votes. So I can support, I can support your resolution. I can't support 8 million.
Other discussion on the motion?
So is it, is it that important that we act tonight on this issue, or can it be delayed until we do further study?
Not sure what you would know in the future that you don't know tonight. I mean, given all of the work that's gone into it at this point.
I guess I would like more definite information as to the actual cost of the facility, what we're going to spend, and whether we need it, and find out what an actual dollar amount's going to be. I'd like to be closer to the exact amount rather than just some big estimate here.
As I understand--
I even have concerns with, you know, the six and a half million, so--
We did forward you the breakdown from the architect. I don't know if everybody got it, but I know that you did see that, and that is the best we've got right now.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I mean, this is the step, we need to figure out what our top at maximum that we're going to go, and then we can't get those numbers until we do this. This is part of the process. We can't get to step D until we do step C, and this is step C.
Correct. The resolutions I read, like you said, Craig, the max we will spend is 6.5 million.
Right. And Russ?
With all due respect, Councilman Schaefer, I mean, Councilman DeCramer said it best. We've been working on this project since--
2009.
2009, a long time. So what do we have to lose by postponing our action another three months? I don't want to, I want something good for City Hall, for City Hall employees, as well as everybody's sitting on this council, I believe. But what do we, we've waited this long now, and yes, we've seen the price go up considerably over the last umpteen years. But what do we have to lose if we wait another four months?
Hey, and I'm going to, I'll put that, that's a great question, so let me put it back to you. What do we gain by waiting three months? What do we need to know in three months that we don't know now to take the next step? We're not approving any bid, we're not approving, we're approving a maximum dollar amount, aligning the funding so we can move forward and get to the next step, and we still have two points where we can stop the project. We are not, we are not executing the project, we're moving to the next step. We are not approving to saw any walls, saw any floors, or pour any concrete. We're not, we're not giving a green light for any of that right now. We're doing the next step.
We're going to agree to disagree, but, you know, that's our opinion.
Correct.
Any other discussion on the motion? No, I don't--
I guess the only thing I'd add to it is, you know, we are trying to work a timeline here that includes our financing, which is separate than getting to bids. Financing has got its own series of timelines that we have to go through. And we need to start that process so that we can get things to come together in the end, when we're looking to actually start some construction, demolition, or whatever it may be. construction demolition or whatever it may be. And we've got a number of expenses out there that we know we're gonna have, or you know, we're gonna have to relocate. We can't be in the building while they're doing the demo. We know we're, it's quite possible we have to demo the building next to us. So, you know, there's a lot of things yet that, yes, we don't know. We're trying to establish a reasonable maximum, not something we're gonna spend. And I'm gonna go back to what maybe you said, Steve, as far as, okay, you're gonna start a project, but you don't lowball the project before you get into it. If I'm gonna do a remodeling on a house or something of that nature, I'm gonna look at the worst case and make sure I can handle the financing on that. And then scale it back from there. Sure doesn't mean I'm gonna spend the worst case. But it does mean that I'm gonna have the money in case that worst case comes about on things that I don't know might be there.
And I guess I would, I would disagree with that statement because if I'm looking at remodeling, I look at my maximum budget period. And if I'm thinking that my worst case is gonna exceed that, then I'm gonna not do the remodel. I'm gonna wait till I can either afford it or get a better deal. And so I see both ways here. You know, on the one hand, Russ, you said, what's waiting three months? You're right. What's waiting three months gonna do? But we've already waited nine, you know, 10 years. What it might do is cost us interest, and that's a gamble that nobody knows. If we wait three months, we also might get a much better interest rate. Nobody knows. So you're weighing the risks versus the benefits. I'm okay with setting our budget to fix our house and set it at the maximum thing. And if worst case comes to worst case, John, then we need to go back to the drawing board and wait, I think.
And Sharon?
Just some comments on the schedule. When the first payment is due and when we need to obtain the funds is maybe in question. But one of the things that we are trying to achieve, and this is why we are where we are tonight requesting it, is we want to issue the bonds in 2019 to call up, to meet the bank qualified bond, which does provide us with a lower interest rate. Otherwise, we could maybe take a little more time. But again, because of the issuance, when we want to complete it in 2019 to achieve a lower interest rate, that's the timing of why it came to the council tonight.
Any other discussion on the motion? Not, I'll move us to a vote on this motion. Close the voting. And that motion does not pass. No, it takes a five sevens.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the resolution about at 7 million.
Is there a second to that motion? Let's take a discussion. I will second the motion. Okay, now, discussion on that motion. You know, one of the things, I mean, the council needs to decide, do we want to set a not to exceed number? And we can, we can play around with not to exceed numbers all night. But at some point, the council needs to make a decision, one way or another. Either we're not gonna do it or we are.
I mean, we really are to the point. And I mean, I understand the validity of all the arguments. I want City Hall as reasonably done as possible. There's still a lot of things we don't know. We're not gonna know until we start getting the bids. I'm thinking here in my mind, because I'm not a process person. I'm a goal oriented. I'm a, I'm a just get in there and get this stuff done, which is dangerous. That's why I appreciate all the input on the council. But I'm thinking to myself as a project owner and and like Mr. Carr is a contractor, my question comes into play. So if we do this and we get a bid and the bid comes in at $6 million for the point of discussion. But there's still a number of unknowns and we don't know what we're gonna face. Is there a credible contractor out there that's gonna say, I'll take a shot at this and guarantee you that $6 million is the maximum? I don't think so. I mean, I don't know, James, I'm not gonna put you on the spot because you might bid on this. I'm not sure. You know, heck, as a contractor, I sure wouldn't do that. So I mean, we need to give ourselves some room. And I think it's good that we do due diligence. I don't think we need to build something in excess, but I do think we need to do something credible. I look back at the big projects that we've had in the community and especially the high school. And I'm really proud of that high school out there. That thing is 15 years old. And it seems like just yesterday we built that. Okay, we've goofed around with this for, I think it's better than 10 years. I think we're doing a disservice to the community to say that we've only talked about City Hall for 10 years because I think there's been problems noted for longer than that. And the longer we wait, the worse it's going to be. And at some point in time, I mean, maybe the decision to leave it where it is now is crazy. But we talked about not taking additional properties off the tax roll that are under, maybe hindsight with things that have happened over this last year on proposed projects in the community that have gone up and for whatever reaction have failed. Maybe we should have done that. I don't know. But the course that we've picked right now is to go where we're at. And we're into this ballgame. And we can either move forward and do this and say that we think we've made a good decision, or we all need to say, you know, we made a bad decision. We need to stop. But if we sit back here and teeter to 6, 5, or 7, I think we're all good people. We're gonna be here for at least a year and a half or two years yet, right? So we're gonna be into this project. We're gonna be into the bids. The same people that are here having the debate are going to be here when those bids come in. And we'll make the decision, is that a good project or not? This isn't the guarantee that we're spending 7 million. It's to say that we could if we need to and get the answers to what we don't know. I mean, I totally respect James. I respect James as a dang smart property owner, an investor, developer, and a contractor. So he's, you know, God, he should be sitting up here. You know, we, I just, but I know we need to move forward. And as maybe as not perfect as our plan would be, we've got to move forward because stopping is not gonna help us. This building is not gonna solve its own problems.
John?
I guess a couple of things is, one, you know, we need this project. We need to do this. We need to get this building fixed up. That's first of all. Do I want to spend $7 million? Absolutely not. I want to get this at the lowest price we possibly can. On the other hand, we just had an apartment building that opened back up doing remodeling, sweet living. Saw some of that in the paper. They ended up spending over $3 million on expenses to bring that back up to the level that it is. And biggest thing is getting into there and doing some of the, you know, the heating systems and everything else. That was not some of the things they anticipated when they got the building. We don't know what we don't know. We want to make sure that we get this project going and that we have some ability if it gets in there. But, you know, do I want to spend the 7 million? Absolutely not. Does this tell us that we're going to spend 7 million? Absolutely not. It tells us that we could if we have to have it available. But we really don't want to do that. And I think that's the feeling everybody up here. We don't want to spend any more than we need to. But on the other hand, I don't want to cut this too short that we end up running into a brick wall just before the project's ready to go. I want to be able to get this project going and have some pad in there. And I think we are gonna be less than 7 million significantly. But we have to get this project started. And we have to get the timeline for the bonding going. So that's my plea here to consider this vote, so.
Any other discussion on that motion?
I agree. Something needs to be done with regarding City Hall. But this is an important decision. We want to get it right. And I'm one that likes to study things and analyze them and consider all the options. And it's my personal opinion, we have the wrong location and the wrong plan. And we're gonna be spending way too much money for this project.
Other discussion on the motion?
I just want to comment on the 7 million. I'm stuck at 6.5 million. I want to put her cap there. I think it could be done for less than that. I know you run it. I built. You run it unexpectedly. You're correct. I think at 6.5 million, we have it built in there. I don't want to see, I just don't want to see 6.5 million. So I am going to vote, no, I'm sticking with 6.5 million. I had your line to stay on it and staying there.
John, the
It's a benefit to our taxpayers.
John, I respect your opinion. You've stated it succinctly and clear. You also know of the positions of other members of the council. Are you in a position of making a compromise on your motion? Because it's clear to me that without it at the level of the previous motion, this project is not gonna move forward.
I think you understand where I'm at, what we want to do. I do need to, I do think we need to get this going. I think all due respect, Glenn, we waited 10 years on this. Every time we wait, it goes up. I would concede and go back. If somebody wants to remake the motion, I will withdraw mine at 7 million. If somebody wants to remake the motion at 6.5, I will.
I will remake the motion at 6.5 million.
First off, motion is withdrawn as well as a second. I will now entertain an alternate motion.
I'll make a motion again at 6.5.
And I'll redo my
Motion by Jim, seconded by Craig. Now discussion on that revised motion?
Let's, let's move forward on City Hall, folks. We need to get this thing going.
With that, we will move to a vote. We will close voting. And that motion does pass. Thank you, everyone, for this important discussion. We will move now to the next agenda item, which will be, consider the award of bids. This is the award of bids for Project Z52. This is the United Community Action Partnership Transit ADA Bus Access Project. The action to consider would be the resolution awarding the contract. Jason, do you have this? Jason Anderson, Assistant City Engineer.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is essentially a project to install some sidewalk in our right of way and some ramp landings along, got a listing of the streets posted there, but it's Birch and South Forest Street and Forest Street near Redwood, I believe it is. There's also a bus stop bump out being proposed on Fourth near Stephen Avenue as part of this project. This was started many years ago, actually before I even started with the city and the initial scoping of this project. There's grant funding that was sought and awarded to the to the city, but in cooperation and by agreement with Ucap Transit. So the agreement was that the city would pay for its costs and engineering related to this project. Ucap would cover the lion's share of the project costs that weren't covered by federal funds. We received bids for this project on July 17. Two bids were received. Hisken Construction of Marshall was the low bidder. You can see that the construction amount was $185,250.15. We've got $75,208 in federal funds. The city of Marshall's participation in this project would be $29,278. And Ucap would pick up the remaining $90,000. We delayed awarding, we delayed bringing this to the council at the last meeting because we wanted to discuss the bids with Ucap Transit and make sure they felt comfortable with the costs. We've got a memo of support included in the packet. Staff would recommend that we award this project to Hisken Construction.
Thank you, Jason. Questions for Jason?
Jason, just a question. It came in considerably higher over the year than you just said. Is there a specific reason for that?
Yeah. No, not a specific reason, but we were concerned about that, too. And that's why we took some time to do our due diligence and feel like we've got this covered. Project deadlines end next year. I think we just undershot estimates based on this being a federally funded project. And I think we we just inadequately take into account the small job size and the federal funds and prevailing wages that are required, the bookkeeping, that sort of thing. We just missed the estimate. We think that if we were to rebid it, we would, we would get some more bids.
Thank you, Jason. Other questions? If not, you have the recommendation, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the recommendation?
Motion by John. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And that motion does pass. Move then to next agenda item, which is the consent agenda. We'll bring the items up on the screen that are on the consent agenda. And they include the professional and technical services contract, the CAT team contract, consideration of temporary extension of the alcohol license area for the gym of Marshall, location 900 Clarice Avenue for August 16, 2019. Consider, consideration of the temporary extension of the alcohol license for Brow Brothers Brewing Company, 1010 East College, East Southview Drive for Hop Fest on September 6 and 7, 2019. Consider the request of Prairie Home Hospice and Community Care for the Light of the Night Parade on Friday, November 29, 2019. Consider a venue change for the application for the Prairie Home Hospice and Community Care for an event to be held November 29, 2019. Consider the application for exempt permit for the shades that passed for June 6, 2020. Consider the authorization to declare vehicles as surplus property for the Marshall Police Department and consider the approval of the bills and project payments. Is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed or purposes of separate discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion.
We'll move it. Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Russ. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And that motion does pass. Move then to Agenda Number 14. This is the Ucap resolution ratifying and approving the Lyon County conduit bonding. Sharon?
Mr. Mayor and Council, the City of Marshall did adopt a previous resolution on June 25 consenting to an issuance of a conduit bond by Lyon County in an amount not to exceed 1.3 million. And the exact amount is found in the request for action. They have since encountered an unexpected delay. And also some funding scenarios that that may require rebidding of the construction of the existing facility. And it could result in the amount that was previously previously authorized to increase. And so the new Ucap request is that the Lyon County Board of Commissioners issue a conduit bond in the amount of not to exceed 2 million. The Lyon County Board of Commissioners has scheduled a public hearing on this for Tuesday, September 3, 2019. And as part of that, the City of Marshall must consent to Lyon County, to Lyon County to issue it the conduit bond, which in this case we do based on our other financing and funding needs within the city. It's advantageous for Lyon County to do this. And this is a really good partnership between the county and the city to help Ucap build this head start facility. If there's additional questions for Lyon County, Auditor Treasurer E.J. Malmberg is present this evening and he can answer any questions you may have on part of the county.
Any questions about this? If not, I would entertain a motion on the resolution.
Go move.
Second. Motion by Russ, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. The motion does pass. Agenda Number 15, consider the authorization to purchase squad cars for the police department with us tonight as Director of Public Safety, Police Chief Jim Marshall. Jim?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you, guys, for your time. I appreciate it. The agenda I have before you is a request by the police department for you to consider replacing two of our existing squad cars. We're asking for your approval to replace two. They're both 2016 Ford Explorers that were put into service in 2015. Both vehicles have served us well during our four-year rotation, but are starting to show their, where we anticipate the mileage on both vehicles to be approximately 100,000 miles with roughly 10,000 engine hours on those vehicles. The bid specs that we use this time were commonly used by the equipment The bid specs that we use this time were, have, were commonly used by the Equipment Review Committee for past purchases, with one exception, and we added in there the police engine idle feature for $245. The engine idle feature is an anti-theft feature, which allows vehicles to run when the keys are removed, but the keys are needed in order for the vehicle to become movable again. And what this really does is just prevents the vehicle from being used by unauthorized people at a time when we're at a call, or whatever the situation might be. We looked at two different options, though, with that. When the officers came forward to, to me with that request, we looked at, number one, maybe using the remote start to it, it's the standard option that comes on our vehicles. Problem is, is that times out after 10 minutes. We then thought about maybe the option of using, seeing if we can get the option for the push button that's commonly found now in most new vehicles, including the fleet vehicles for the Ford Explorer. The issue is that, that's not an option for the police package vehicle. So with that said, we kind of moved forward with adding this feature. We can have more discussion on that, but we did receive two bids, one from the Cooperative Purchasing Venture, which we all know as the state bid part of it, and then also a bid from Cruz Ford, which is their local dealer. The difference between the two bids was $191.44, with the state bid being the lowest or least expensive bid at $32,788.56 per unit. I did, if you did have a chance to review the agenda item report, I did mention in there that we did have a conversation with Cruz Motors, and they anticipated that the estimated delivery date would be 24 to 26 weeks, which is six months from the time of order. So that's why we're kind of bringing this forward now, because we would like to have these vehicles in place in the beginning of 2020. I think just for respect of your time, I'll stop. I don't know if you have any specific questions of me?
Questions for Jim?
The only question I have is, since we switched to a four-year rotation with the new vehicles, from cars to the SUVs, you heard and seen maintenance problems.
Not so much mechanical issues. You know, now we're probably running into the issues with, you know, Dr. Meister, maybe you know a little bit about this, one of the biggest issues that plagues our law enforcement profession is back injuries, you know? So and there's a number of different factors for that, but one of them, obviously, is the amount of time that we spend in cars in the seat. So I started looking at maybe replacing the seat if that was an option, if we didn't go in this direction, but it's so, I mean, just to replace a seat, the cushions and the fabric was, be between $2200 and $2600. So it really wasn't a, a good option for us at this point in time.
So a four-year cycle's working well?
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that was finished.
And Russ?
Jim, just a question on page 14 of the, of the item description. Just explain what's your rationale for ordering four key fobs?
Four, four, I think that might be kind of standard, that comes with the, with the cars.
It's a $319 extra, I was just curious.
Yeah, well, we need more than one, you know, we have, yeah.
I was just curious if there's a reason why you needed four?
Um, we always have one spare in case one is lost, and then usually two officers are assigned to those squad cars.
Okay.
And they always have their own, pardon me?
More's enough?
Yeah, that's good. That's good.
Because you charge for, for lockout.
Four fobs and two cars would be good.
Any other questions?
They don't, they don't charge for lockout if the, if the officer can bring the extra key.
Any other questions?
The only question that I have, and it's more of a question that I want people to think, and this is where, for more information, okay, so you said that the local user, which is only a little bit more expensive, $200, so it's worth it, but then you've got that 24 to 26 week-
Right.
-by time. If you go with the state option, what's the time?
I don't think the turnaround is going to be any sooner. I just know from past experiences from other agencies, it is.
Okay. Is it based on the manufacturing schedule?
Yes.
And out of, Jim, out of respect, did consult, as the chairman of the, of the Equipment Review Committee, to both talk about that and to expedite this, and then also to confirm that the only change in spec is that add-on for, to make these not drive-off-able, so that they could continue to run with the key removed. So, you know, I think this is a, it's a solid proposal, and I think it's here today for the right reasons.
I just have one other statement, and this is just my getting on people for letting cars run. You know, it says that there's 10,000 engine hours on a four-year car. Well, a lot of that could probably be avoided if we shut the things off, because they start quick now. So that's just my, you know, you save fuel, you save wear and tear, you save money if we shut them off once in a while, they're pretty reliable cars.
Yeah, you know, if I can, I'll just quick comment, you know, we really try to police ourselves fairly, fairly close on that. You know, we're a little bit different because we have so much electronic equipment, and we do have a policy in place that, that we follow closely for the time that they are running, you know, from when our lights are on, or our recording equipment is on, our computers are on. So we do try, I, I know it's a concern of everybody's, and we try to watch it close.
And Russ?
Jim, just one other question, just with the hands-free. I would guess that these vehicles are equipped with hands-free. I'm just curious, how, how do you engage that with multiple officers, officers driving the vehicle?
I think they're all able to enter their own phones when they get into the vehicle, but the ones that we're replacing, the two now, are not hands-free.
Yeah, okay. All right. So with the new ones, they are, you can all do it?
Yes, they are, yeah. We're able to make that work.
Law enforcement's exempt from the hands-free law?
Uh, to a degree, maybe. I don't encourage it, though. Try to follow the rules like everybody else.
I think it's important to, to remember that, that the officer's cockpit is pretty busy for a lot of various reasons, and there's a lot of time and things that I have to do. And I just, I don't want to get in, because Jim can more than adequately address the idle piece, but if you do the ride-along, I suggest you try to do a ride-along and get there the same time the officer that's coming on duty gets there, and go through their pre-check and what they have to do before they take that vehicle and leave the lot. And then you'll understand why sometimes they can't shut it off, because to do due diligence for some of that, because it's their life safety, they have to go through that again when they restart the vehicle. So I just, just saying, I mean, they're, I think we've beat this dog to death, both here, but also at the committee, and, and I, I really commend the officers, because they've been reporting back pretty diligently, that they've, they've heard what we've said about the idle piece. And I'll just make an observation, I'm not going to pick on any other law enforcement branch that's in the area, but just watching where the vehicles are side by side, because they do, they do cooperate a lot with other law enforcement, our folks do a pretty good job. They've heard the message, and, and, and I think they've, and they, they needed to do some improvement, and I think they've, they've gathered that where they can. So I, I think that, that they've taken it seriously, and I applaud them for the work they did, and, and thank you, Jim, for bringing this forward. I'll make a motion to approve this.
Second.
Is that motion through the state, better for Cruz Motors?
For Cruz.
Thank you. Motion by Craig, seconded by Russ for the recommendation. Discussion on that motion? If not, we will move to a vote. Close the voting. So yes, that motion passes. Move then to the next agenda item, which is to consider the Tobacco 21 Ordinance. Sharon, I believe you have this, the recommendation is to, is to recommend that this be referred to the Legislative and Ordinance Committee.
Yes, on certain topics, and maybe a majority of them, if there's an ordinance consideration, it is good to get council feedback and support to refer it to the LNO Committee. And in this case, we did have a request by a council member to have the council, or specifically LNO prior to council, consider the Tobacco 21 Ordinance. And so, the request before you is to refer this matter to LNO.
I see you guys are chatting there. I would, the only, I'm not opposed to this. I think this should actually be something that's worked on with the county, because how I see this, in my mind, is we enforce, we enact this in the city of Marshall, now we're going to be pushing our kids again to Minnoda, Cottonwood, to buy their tobacco. I think before we send this to LNO, I think it'd be a good conversation to sit down with our counterparts over at the county and see if we can't do a county-wide ordinance.
I believe the county already considered that, didn't they? And did not?
I was told they have not.
There were discussions on the prior ordinance, and they did not.
And I, and I would like to see a good that route, so we're not our own little island here. I would like to protect our children, our children, our young adults, from driving to other communities late at night, because they need their, their cigarettes. And I think that'd be a wise choice to do, is work with the county on this.
I think we can do both. I think Legislative and Ordinance Committee, I mean, we do, we do have the responsibility of licensing in the city, but at the same time, yes, there should be the discussion on Lyon County, so, but I think the city could be the leader on that.
I guess my question is, do, do you even read a resolution? Can't you just say the LNO is going to consider this matter and report back? I mean, on most matters, they don't, we don't say a certain committee has to act on an issue. We, we just turn it over to them, they make recommendations and send it back to us.
So, what are the wishes of the council?
I'd make the motion that we refer this to LNO.
Motion by Steve, is there a second to that motion?
One second.
Seconded by Russ, discussion?
So, I actually, it was my recommendation as a physician, as the Medical Director of Public Health, and seeing the, that we had a huge downplay in tobacco from youth, year after year after year. Now with this vaping trend, it's starting to go up again, and just, I don't know if you've been seeing the latest news, but I just got what's called a Health Advisory Network warning today, that vaping is actually killing people. Kids think it's a safer alternative to smoking, and they actually vape, and when you're vaping, they use this really hot thing, which takes that juice, and there's formaldehyde in it, and the actual element cooks itself. And so you get all the toxicity, from the metal toxicity, and kids are getting what's called popcorn lung. It's fatal, period. It's fatal. It'll kill you quicker than tobacco will. So I think we really need to work on this, and, and I agree, Jim, I would love to see the county go for this, but I don't want to let the county rule us. I think we need to be the leaders of this, so. I think it needs to go to Legislative and Ordinance, and we can have those discussions there, but we need to talk about it.
I think we need to work together. I don't, anybody should be the leader. I think we need to work together and work with them and enact it together, and put a statement together. Plan some by that.
And maybe we're the prod that gets it moving.
Yep.
Get it in front of the committee, and let's, let's get it moving.
And, and we do need to hear from both, both sides of the issue, from parties on both sides of the issue, and, and Jim brought up a, a very important point about individuals going to other communities to get the cigarettes if they can, get them in Marshall. So this is an issue we really need to give thorough study. There's the good points on both sides of the issue, and we need to hear from constituents what they think of it. After all, we're supposed to represent their views, and this is something where we really need the public involved in helping us make this type of decision.
I think this is an important issue, and I respect Dr. Meister states as far as the real health of the area. Other discussion on the motion? Motion is to refer this to Legislative and Ordinance Committee. I'll move us to a vote. Close the voting.
I mean, I mean, again, I thought he would push it.
You, uh, real?
No, he can add it.
Yes, yes. Okay.
Senator, if you want, Kyle.
I'll help you.
Okay. Once again, Glenn voted yes.
I have a hand, let's want to quick go over there.
So we'll move then, that motion does pass. So we'll move then to Agenda Item Number 17, 2019 Frost Boils, the Pavement Repair Authorization. Glenn, we haven't called on you all day.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you know, we've been talking about this for some months. We had a real significant winter and spring, lots of moisture, lots of freeze-thaw cycles, and we put together a listing of those items that occurred during that period of time that was included under a FEMA declaration. And Kyle's been working with FEMA on establishing the issue. We put that together. That's a listing of, of current areas that were designated as being damaged under that period of time. So we're asking for approval for the repair of those frost boils at those specific locations that we have noted. They requested that we do GPS coordinates of each one of those to identify what and where and how much for each individual site. So of course, when we do the estimate of area, that's what it is. It's like the estimates you talk about. Once you get out to the site, it might vary a little bit, and that's why in the request, we made the request for up to 125, even though we have approximately $100,000 worth of, of actual estimates to do. So Kyle, do you have any other comments about, we haven't gotten a firm yes, we're going to cover it, we're going to be meeting with FEMA, and I'd like Kyle to, to fill that part in, meeting with them for the next process, but we really need to be working on these frost boils right now, so that we can be done before winter, so that we can do snow removal on those streets.
Correct. Thank you, Mayor and Council. As Director Olson said, we've gotten word from FEMA that frost boils are ineligible expense for reimbursement from the March 12 through April 28 disaster. So we've recorded those on our damage inventory report, and we have not scheduled a meeting, or a meeting has not been scheduled yet with the state and the FEMA representatives to go over that. So we're in a limbo period right now, but the work, we are able to go out and do the work and do the repairs, and then documenting all of that work in our hope for reimbursement.
Craig?
Quick question, so like the other damages that happened from the flooding with the levee, that's all core, that we're looking at core mitigation for that, right? That's not, none of that's FEMA?
Not FEMA.
So is this the only open FEMA request that we have is for the frost boils, or is there anything else out there that we're trying to group in with this?
There's multiple things, yes. I don't have the list in front of me tonight, but there's approximately, there's multiple areas in town that would be addressing from this March disaster.
Okay. A major one would be tree removal.
Sure. Okay. And so that, that part would not be core? The tree removal?
No.
Okay. And will they approve those à la carte? Or are they going to approve it as a blanket request?
So there's different, it's, there's different requests, there's different categories that FEMA has designated, whether it's debris removal, emergency work, parks, different categories. Your minimum expense or damage has to be $3,000 for that particular category. We've exceeded all of those minimums. I wasn't prepared for a total tonight, but, I mean, I can provide that information and-
I'm just curious as to how we're-
We're well over those totals and, and minimum requirements for-
Okay, good.
-multiple projects within the city.
We have a couple of things. First off, these frost boils obviously need to be repaired as, or the street department has been working on them, and if possible, we'd certainly, certainly like to have that reimbursement through the disaster aid that is-
Right.
-should be available, so.
Yep. Good. Excellent.
Russ?
Mr. Mayor, that'd be my question. Glenn, are all these currently being repaired? Are they done, or they?
No, they're just begun, though. They're just, just begun.
The only reason I ask is that you've got 303 East Thomas. That street was milled and overlaid.
Yeah. So that one was repaired already.
What?
That's been repaired already.
Okay, so some of them have been repaired, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Move to approve.
Second. Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And the motion passes. Move then to the next agenda item, which is Agenda Item Number 18, South High Street, South Whitney Street, 100, 200 block, the alley improvement project, the action before us is a resolution approving the plan specifications and ordering the advertisement up for the bids. Glenn?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We had a, an excellent, I call it, informational meeting with the property owners last night at City Hall. And while all of the people didn't get to attend, it was a pretty short notice, but we wanted to talk with the property owners before we brought it to council, to, to let them know what the results of their request had been. So the, the property owners petitioned for an improvement that included two things. One, stormwater improvements, and secondly, and/or concrete asphalt, concrete alley improvements. So at the meeting last night, we brought the, the project forward to those people that were there, and the ones that weren't, this is kind of, this is kind of the update for them. And what we did was, we kept the ideas separate at the, at the presentation. We discussed them. This is what we would do. from College Drive here to East Marshall Street. So, that's the area. And when we took a look at it, we, we made the recommendation that the entire alley doesn't need storm sewer, physical storm sewer installed. We need physical storm sewer installed to be able to capture the water that comes down the alley. So, we only have the main part of the storm sewer coming up to the mid part of the alley, not even quite the mid part, with the ability of each property owner to install tile lines from their property to this storm sewer line. The main, and we talked about cost, the main part of the project would be recommended to be participated in by all of those people that participate in the drainage area, not that they necessarily had a pipe going all the way up to their property, but that would participate in the area. So, that means, cursor down just a little bit if we could, the other way, up, up, I guess, okay, the, the, the top three properties really drain to East College Drive, they don't drain to, to East Marshall Street. So, they did not, we, we advised that they would not participate in the costs of the improvements on the southern part of the alley, just those three. We also discussed that the cost of the storm sewer would be borne by each of the people that do participate. So, instead of 21 properties, we used 18 properties for participation in that storm sewer project, that, that they were involved with, with the storm sewer. And each of the properties that would like a direct connection from their yard, their backyard, to the storm sewer would pay for their own connection to that storm sewer. And while we do not know the cost of the project at this time, and we've talked about that on the City Hall project and things, we don't know the cost, we will say that hopefully, we, our engineer's estimate is on the high end, and that came to about $2,600 apiece. We didn't do it by square footage, we didn't do it by French footage, we did it by, we'll put in this project, we'll recommend that be a unit cost for everybody that has, has part of their property as a watershed to this improvement. So, once that discussion was, was, we had that discussion, we talked about the concrete alley, and the concrete alley is really, it's associated with, but not really, it's not really for the, the runoff issue. It's for a lot of issues. It's for containing some of the runoff for a certain rainfall event, it's for hard surface, it's for getting rid of the gravel, the rutting and the blading and the dust and the, there's a, there's a lot of things that putting in a hard-surfaced alley would do. And, and, and that estimate for doing that was borne by the entire alley, all the way from north to south, and that was about $3,400 to do that concrete work. That's our estimate, not, not having bids. Well, the discussion we had is, was it really necessary for everyone? Even if we participated in the signing of the petition requesting it, now, when the numbers come in, do, at those numbers, do we really believe that I'm benefiting by that dollar amount for a 16-foot wide concrete strip going down the alley? And some of them indicated, no, it really didn't. Or, you know, why don't we see what happens when we install the storm sewer, and see if that takes care of our problem, and then go from there? So, what's coming to you tonight is a split of the project. We said last night at the meeting that we could split the project, we have one petition, we're not asking for another one, but we could divide that into two phases, one to get the storm sewer work done in 2019, so it was ready by the spring runoff next spring, so that we could see how that worked, and then, next spring, have another informational meeting with the property owners and say, okay, now, do you want to go forward with the concrete alley or not? And there is also discussion is, could we do three-quarters of the alley in concrete for those who wanted it, and the rest, leave it as gravel? The answer to me is yes, because this is their project. This is a petition by the property owners to come to us to ask for us to try to solve a problem that they've got, and they definitely have a water problem, and some of them would like to see the surfacing taken care of too, so that's the end of the rutting and softness of the alley and the freeze thaw in the spring and those things. So, what we are recommending is to hold off on the concrete portion, discuss that next spring, go ahead with the storm sewer portion of the project, and get that done this fall before next spring's runoff. You know, when you drive down the alley, you really do hate to see piles of sandbags waiting for next year. You do. And that's what we have, and we have some people with real problems, not only in their alley, but we also said, while not always recommended, we would allow some pump connections to that storm sewer. Okay? That's, that's, that's a big deal. So, another thing we talked about is, now that we know approximate cost, we won't know what the actual cost is until after the bids come in. Does, and this is kind of a question for Dennis, I didn't get, I wasn't able to talk to him today before the meeting, but, once we establish the cost, do they still have the right to protest their assessment, even though it's been petitioned that they want to do the work? And so, we talked about last night, I don't think we can ever give up the rights to protest of an assessment project.
That's the correct answer.
Okay, that, that's what we talked about. So, I think they'll always have that right. We've, we also talked about the idea of relieve, releasing your right to protest after we got the project cost in, but I think that when the project costs come in, that's a time to decide whether or not to approve the bids or reject the bids and start from scratch, or have input from the property owners for, at that time. So, we're recommending going forward with the storm sewer portion of the project and calling for bids.
Thank you, Glenn. Questions for Glenn? Property owners that are here, you've been patient all evening, and this isn't a public hearing, but if you have something to say, I'd entertain that too.
Kevin Bellheisen, 103 South High Street, just want to add some clarity to why there's some dissension amongst the neighbors, even though we assigned, we all signed the appeal, or a majority of us. When they came around to sign the petition, we were all apathetic to the, the water that was collecting in their yards and in their garages and causing erosion issues in some of their garages, things like that. And so, we signed the petition because we wanted to allow them to at least have the conversation. And I, I want you all to know, that is why we, we signed it, to have the conversation. It did not mean we wanted to automatically green light all aspects of this, primarily the concrete, because there are a number of us who will receive absolutely no benefit from that. We're all dealing with water in our own homes, and money for the concrete will take away money that we can use to mediate the water in our homes, and I think we can all relate that water mediation in our homes takes precedent over water issues anywhere else. And so, that is, that's the basic thing that I want to say, and to please, as, as Glenn stated, follow Chapter 429 of state law to give us the, the right to appeal, and to follow the entire appeal process and the assessment process. That, that's what we ask, so.
Other questions for Glenn?
I guess I'm wondering, the property owners, do they feel like the $2,600 per parcel is a fair amount?
To not deal with that water, yes.
You're talking for the storm sewer?
Right.
Yes, we are, we are in favor and approve of that.
So, you feel it's a reasonable amount?
Yes.
Jimmy, you have a comment?
Well, just a, sorry. Jim Smalley, 113 South High, kind of to Glenn's question there, I think the, the amounts proposed that, that Mr. Olson talked about are fair and adequate, they're, they're not surprising or shocking of anything that we've gone through in this whole discussion process, so I think his property owners on the south end of the, of the project were happy with the proposals and, and the way they look. I know Kevin talked about the, the discussion about the, the splitting up of the concrete and, and having that discussion. I think this is a nice compromise of, let's move forward with the drainage issue, that's the most serious issue right now, and see where the bids come in with the concrete, and then kind of continue this discussion going forward. I, I think we all support that idea of, of where that goes, so, thank you.
Andy, Ed, Craig?
I just, I want to applaud everybody, I think for, for staying focused on, on what your needs are and prioritizing, and for everybody to, to get together and, and come to the, to a workable solution and a process to, to get where you need to go. I, I have had contact from, from individuals on this, and I applaud everyone for their consciousness of, of everybody's needs and the respect for that. You guys have done a really good job on this, and, and I commend you for, for how you've approached this.
So, Glenn, this will be designed as if it will be an inverted crown, it'll be a bit of concrete around the inlet, so it doesn't fill up in gravel, and?
Yep, and for the storm sewer portion only, we will be installing a concrete perimeter, so during gravel operations this winter, we don't knock the top off the catch basin, for instance.
And one other piece, I think it's important just to understand that while the, the property owners are bearing the cost for the initial construction and installation, the main part of the storm sewer itself, then the city will take over ownership and maintenance, but the individual lines, just as it is with the sanitary sewer, will remain the property and responsibility to the individual owners. But, and I think that's a really, really equitable solution, and, and obviously, it's consistent with what, how we deal with the other utilities.
With that, I would entertain a motion out of the resolution that would approve. Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve, discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting? And the motion does pass. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number 19, Authorization for Sponsor Participation with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Flood Control Project Betterments. Glenn? Or Jason?
Yep, Jason, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, again, Mayor. So, following recent high-water events, I know we've talked about that a few times, but we've identified various locations along the levee system, the Army Corps of Engineers Flood Protection Project. You've got a map in your packet where we identified six different locations where there was typically slope failure along those locations. Particularly, location number two is of really serious concern to us, because that location has already began the undermining of the levee prism. So, this spring, early summer, we got in contact with the Corps of Engineers, asked them to come down and, and review it with us. They also had serious concerns with location two, but also identified that 1, 2, 3, and 6 would all be coverable by them through Public Law 8499. So, when I say that they'll cover expenses to reinstating that, that means putting it back to its condition prior to the rain event. If the city wishes to do anything above and beyond that to prevent these from happening again, even if it is maybe a design flaw, we're responsible for paying for those costs. That's just the way the public law is written. The federal government won't pay for anything more. So, looking at these locations and talking about how we can prevent future issues at these locations, we've asked the Corps of Engineers to provide us with a cost estimate to include those betterments in their project, and I've attached that in your packet, a planning level estimate from them. It's roughly $190,000 if the city wished to participate in the project, in some betterments at these locations. Presumably, the betterments would help prevent these washouts from occurring again and protect the integrity of our system. The city's not required to participate in the, the betterments. The Corps of Engineers would strongly urge that we do in some of the locations, but we're not required to. We could always try to make improvements on our own at a later date, but it's staff's belief that it may be worth the high cost of working with the Corps to get it done now, because once you work with them and they put together the project, they get it permitted, they get it considered part of the project, and now it's part of the system. It modifies the flood control project to include these improvements. Not that we can't do that at a later date on our own, as you can imagine, just working with the federal government to get that done takes time, effort, and added expense, so part of that you're paying for with this $190,000 estimate, so.
Really, what these betterments are is extending the, I'll call it, rock riprap.
Almost entirely extending riprap to better protect the levee.
Especially in areas where the river is moving, around these oxbows on the, if we bring up that other photo.
Right.
It's where those curves are, and really extending it back, and that, you know, location number one, location number two, when you're out there on the bike trail, you can see.
Location two is really severe. Location one is a couple high-water events away from being really severe. Location three, we're kind of worried about it undermining behind the existing riprap and causing more fallout, and then getting close to the levee again there. So, you can just see problems down the line, and, you know, the levee system and these improvements in a lot of these locations have been there for many numbers of years. It's probably would follow that we're ready to put some money into it. It is our responsibility to do O and M on this project, that's part of our contract with the federal government.
So, the, you know, last April, and you may want to comment on this because you and Glenn were both elder, but when there was real risk of failure of that levee system, and if that would have happened because of undermining, it would have compromised the...
Correct, Mayor. This particular location of our levee system is hugely important to protecting Marshall, because if this fails, you have flooding, property damage for a pretty big portion of the southern part of the town. It's, it's pretty important, and the Corps of Engineers recognizes that as well.
I would really speak strongly of doing this project right.
Going forward, say that there's another high-water event, we do these betterments, then will they come in and add those and repair the, I mean, would the Corps of Engineers say?
It is my understanding.
Here's now the new thing, it's not the one back to 2017.
Correct, correct. It's our understanding that they would reinstate this portion of the project too, because it's now become part of the project. They've modified our flood control project to include this area of our marine.
My only question is, the, you know, location number two, that was an emergency operation when riprap had to be?
Correct, we placed 100 cubic yards of riprap, just as a minimal amount to protect future undermining this spring and catastrophic loss, yeah.
Because of that, you know, the nature, it had to be done within a matter of hours, so there wasn't time to bridge or protect the bike trail, so that's where the damage to the bike trail happened, when the owners went across it, so.
And a big thank you to D and G out of Lindt for stepping up immediately and helping us out.
So, will we be able to do these projects without destroying the bike trail?
I can't guarantee that. What we'll try to do is, we're in charge of lining up construction access and easement, and we'll try to, I think what we'll try to do is enter down John Deere Drive, we'll have to reach out to these property owners, talk about using their road, probably try to track behind the levee if we can as much as possible, and just wreck the trail on a few choice locations. Can't guarantee you yet what we're going to get worked out, but...
We could talk offline on that, but that field was not planted to crop this spring because of prevented planting.
Another, another suggestion too is, is that with a lot of the work that's going on with some of the tower farms, there's some of the compression panels that may be available to temporarily borrow to protect some of that area, the levee and the bike path.
Sure. Sure.
Other questions for Jason? Thank you, Jason.
I have a couple of questions here. One, the estimate here is from the Army Corps of Engineers, right?
Correct.
Dollar amount. Is there any feeling, and it's my understanding that they, when then, they would contract with people to do this work.
Correct.
We would not, we just reimburse them a certain amount of money.
Correct, we'll pay them for engineering fees and bidding fees and inspection fees, that's right. They're essentially our consultant on the project.
Is there any thought that if we would bid this locally and do the betterments ourselves, we'd get it for a lower price at all?
I think you may because there'll be federal prevailing wages on this job, but there's some offsetting of time, resources, and expense of us developing plans, going through permitting, which the last permit that we did, Section 408 modification permit, took us over nine months to get completed. So it's not, like, it's not without its own hassle. So to an extent, I think there's some savings there. Whether it's a perfect balance, I'll never be able to tell you. And this is just an estimate. You know, right now, they haven't, we have to do this to even authorize them to begin design because they're probably going to ask us for the money upfront to put in escrow and say, "Now we have your commitment." So they're not going any further until we tell them to. So we're taking a little bit of a leap of faith that we're going to get a good product in the end, but we have to kind of trust their expertise in this area too, and that's what they do, so.
So what if the timing of that, and kind of building on your question, the Area 1 and Area 2 would be able to be repaired and get this?
The Corps of Engineers would push hard to get location two, for sure, completed before the snow flies because of the severity of the location. The rest of them, we'd probably just work on into next year.
Mr. Mayor?
Just to kind of, and to go off of what Glenn is asking too, is a couple of things. One is, if we let the Corps do it, they're one of the big signators to the permit. So if they own the project, it's pretty much a guarantee to get the permit and expeditiously. And number two, again, is if we don't participate with them, this continues in perpetuity then, our maintenance problem. If we go into this, yeah, we're paying for it up now, but they're warranting it.
Correct.
So that's the bonus added, is that if this needs future maintenance, now it's in their wheelhouse, and we participate, but we're not the 100% owner of it anymore.
Correct, we're still going to be responsible for normal O and M, but in the event of a major failure, it would qualify for PL 8499 assistance where they can step in and do it at their expense.
Okay, and that's big.
This goes to the motion itself, so in the motion, do we have the wording that we will pay for the betterments in an amount up to 190,000, or would it, do we set a limit on it, or what?
You know, I guess that's up to the council. I, kind of like I alluded to before, they haven't even really started to completely define these costs. It's a planning level estimate, I hope they use big numbers. I think they probably did. I can't, maybe I can come back to you if the costs come back higher, maybe that's what you want to do, maybe you want to set this number, and Glenn or I can bring this back.
I think we could have the motion as an estimated, because of what the estimate is now, and then staff would confirm.
Let's actually include it in the motion.
I'd be willing to make that motion with that qualification in there.
Motion by Craig, sir, seconded.
Second.
Seconded by Jim. Discussion?
The only question I have has nothing to do with that discussion, but I was looking at location number five. That was a bridge that was installed eight, 10 years ago.
I can speak to those locations for a minute, I kind of glossed over why they weren't covered. So location four is a walkout, or a washout, excuse me, in the two slopes on the sides of that circle. You can see it pretty clearly if you drive by the bridge there on Highway 19 and just look down the channel, you'll see there's a washout there. And the other one is on the other side of the bridge, there's some sheet piling in the channel, and a pipe, and a washout around that pipe. I was skeptical that, I didn't think they'd cover it, and they didn't, but...
I guess my question on location five, it wasn't improper installation of the bridge, there's nothing?
No, no, it's just washouts, and the reason they're not going to cover them is they've showed up on prior inspection reports, they meet with us on a yearly basis, go through the whole system, we talk about it. They've already kind of put it on notice, and once that's been listed, it's our deal.
You just had a big circle around the bridge, it's like, maybe on the bridge.
He tried to white out the bridge, but it didn't.
Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting, and the motion passes. Thank you, Jason. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number 20, Waste Water Treatment Facilities Improvement Project, and we have an application for payment number one from Magny Construction. Any questions?
Just an explanation, Mayor and Council, is that because of the PFA money, it's required to have an agenda item in front of the council for approval. So you'll be seeing this project come up regularly for council approval as a specific action. That's all.
Sir, motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Russ, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. Motion passes. We'll move then to the next agenda item, which is Consider Appointments to Various Boards and Commissions, Boards and Authorities. Earlier this evening, we had a special meeting where we interviewed an applicant for Community Services Advisory Board to fill the vacancy that has been created due to the resignation of Dr. Dwight Watson, and it's our recommendation based on liaison to the Community Services Advisory Committee, Councilmember Meister, as well as myself, that Rafael Aniaga be appointed to fill that term, offer that as a recommendation, entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Russ. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. Motion passes. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number 22, Consider a Special Event Permit for Sales This Summer. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by John, seconded by Jim. Discussion? Move to a vote. Close the voting. Motion passes. We'll note the abstention of Councilmember Russell Bat. The, we'll move then to Agenda Item Number 23, Consider the Approval for Temporary Until Intoxicating Liquor Licenses for SMSU. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
By Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. Motion passes. We'll move then to the next agenda item, Agenda Item Number 24, Commission Board Liaison Reports. From my standpoint, the, neither have met the quarterly meeting on Board of Trustees of Fire Relief Association, has been delayed, and the Southwest Regional Development Commission does not meet in the month of August. However, the revolving loan fund will be meeting on Thursday, the SRDCI Service Chair of that group. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At our last meeting, because of, for the sake of time, a number of us forewent our reports, and so I want to just do a report on the Merit Center that met last month prior to July 23rd, and just give some update numbers because I think it's important to know that there are really good things happening there, and that Jasmine, I think she's into just about finishing up her second year, I believe, and that place is really starting to move. In June, she had a two-day training for sheltering in place with the American Red Cross. Midwest has conducted solar energy workshops for local teachers. The Worthington Campus, which has a law enforcement class, Jim, and they've been utilizing the original portion, the south portion of the driving track, and so they plan on continuing to do that. So that's a real plus, and that shows the fact that it is a solid regional center. Navara Marshall had their leadership meeting at the Merit Center June 18th, and there were 52 people in attendance, and they indicated that they really liked that venue and will likely be using that, continue to use that in the future. Marshall Fire Department hosted a Midwest Training Associates class on their live burn and burn scene, fire scene incident command training, the end of June. Border Water and Soil Resources is using it. They had 41 participants attend a one-day training event the end of June. The U.S. Postal Service, Marshall has hosted some training for supervisors early July, and they had 28 supervisors there for that. Of course, the track expansion is going great, the parking lot at the Merit Center has been paved out, that's a huge improvement, looks good, thank you. I know that things are going to start moving, I believe, later here on the proposal for the archery range, and I think there, I found out last night talking to Tyler, that he, Barrows and Arrows, has also put up a brand-new bow set for 100% proceeds for a raffle going back to actually help Tyler fund the build-out to help support the archery range. So there's a lot of excitement about that, that I've heard a lot of people talk about that. From July 1st of 2018 to June 30th of 2019, so for what I consider, because I work for the state government fiscal year 2019, there were 6,924 participants at the Merit Center. That's up from 4,356 the year prior, so a substantial increase in it. And Jasmine told me that for May through July, the Merit Center had 57 out of 65 business days that it was being fully used. So I think that's huge, and it just continues to get better. The other piece that Jim confirmed with me this earlier today, they, he and Jasmine had spent a lot of time with the representative from Minnesota West and has renegotiated the lease agreement with Minnesota West to continue using that as their Marshall campus, and I believe that you have an agreement in principle that's with the state right now getting ready to be signed, so. Yep, so that agreement, or that relationship continues to go, and you know, in, they were a really important tenant and occupant when we first got going, they were really what was going on out there. But now that this place has really taken off, we've had what I think are good growing pains because there's been a lot of competition for space and use, and so I commend, Jim did a great job of kind of re-establishing that relationship and kind of staking out expectations and getting everything on top of the table. So cleans up invoicing, cleans up financial and physical expectations, so I look forward to that continuing to grow, and I think that'll still be a solid relationship. So my hat's really off to Jasmine and the work that she's done, and for Jim for supporting her in the work that she does. So, and I know that Alex has spent a lot of time out there. That facility, for all the different functions that the community in the area uses it for, and especially as our emergency operations center, it is a Class 1 facility, and I think we can be really proud of it. I know the groups that have gone out there and used it in those types of settings or that have that vision are pretty jealous of what we have, and it's pretty good, and it's because of the dedication of the people that we have and the support that the community's given us for that. So we can be really proud of the Merit Center. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
I have no reports from Mr. Mayor.
Public Housing Commission met yesterday, and the main items of business is, they reviewed and approved the 2020 budget, and they reviewed and awarded an audit contract. It pays from time to time to put these contracts out for bid. The difference between the high and low bid was, the high bid was 7,500 for the audit, and the low bid was 3,400. So the low bid was less than 50% of the high bid, so like I say, from time to time, it's good to put these contracts out for bids.
Was it the same auditing firm or a different one?
The, it's a new auditing firm that we're going to have. The one that was in the last year didn't even submit a bid.
My boards did not meet. And Russ?
Library did not meet in August, Place Advisory did not meet, and I was not able to attend the CBB meetings.
And Jim?
I have nothing.
We'll move then to Councilmember Individual items, Jim?
Twice wrong, speechless, and that's a shock.
Russ?
Yeah, it's really.
Can I follow that? Wow. Just one quick thing, I think City Administrator Hanson and maybe Scott Vandermille, and a couple of us received an email about the dog droppings in Independence Park. It's on the path, it's on the walking path and everything else, and wondering what could be done, and, you know, just maybe an ordinance enforcement, but it's kind of hard to enforce it 24/7 out there, but, and I know we've got dog dropping receptacles out there and everything else, but...
Not only on the...
Yeah, it's not only at Independence Park.
It's on every sidewalk.
The question happened in Independence Park, are you sure it's not geese?
I was wondering the same thing.
That could be too, but it's...
There's a lot of geese out there, unfortunately, so we...
I'm just bringing it up because I know we have the same problem in Freedom Park and my own neighborhood, and so...
In London, they actually have spent the money to do analysis on dog genetics, and everything's licensed, and what they do is they pick it up and they mail it to the, they mail it.
Well, I don't think we'd have it on our budget, Dr. Meister.
We do...
They do in London.
We do believe it is goose droppings, nonetheless, it is an issue, and we would like resolution to the number of geese. Did I say ducks? I meant geese.
Goose's.
Yeah.
Population in our ponds.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Right, I would concur with the geese are, and their droppings and their behavior becoming a problem, not only at Independence, but certainly around the Minnesota pond and around the ballpark, and you know, so any place where there's water, it seems, so.
Well, that'd be perfect for...
You want to come up with a solution?
Perfect for archery people to go out.
I'd be a little careful about that, but we, you know, I'm sure it's a discussion point. I, the dog owner etiquette thing, I think, is very important, and this comes from a pretty dog-intense family, okay? The residents, and especially the dog owners in Marshall, need to understand that the rules are pretty specific about, you pick up after your animal. Be a good dog owner, pick up after your animal. I've got a very, very nice neighbor lady who is very tolerant of my dogs because we don't let my dogs do their relief on her lawn, but I'm telling you that the people that walk by her corner do, and if she could catch them, I think they'd better run fast because I'm pretty sure she could hit them with it. And I don't blame her, and I mean, there's, we don't do our dogs in the front yard, and I pick up a lot of dog flares in my front yard, and it's frustrating, and people need to be good pet owners. I know that when Memorial Park was first dedicated, there was actually going to be a covenant to make that a dog-free park, and I came here as a resident and somebody who has a lot of stake in that park, and begged that people don't do that, but it's part of respect, and I think that as residents, and we walk around and you see somebody walking a dog, now we have them pretty obvious on each one of our leashes that there's bags there, and we're pretty dedicated to use it. I've even been known to pick up some that I know my dogs didn't leave, but you know, that's way beyond what we need to talk about tonight, but just put the word out, people need to take care of their dogs.
Well, thanks, Craig, I'll get us back on track. I promise I won't bring up dog...
Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. The only thing I really have is to thank those that put on the appreciation grilling today. It was a nice get-together and good time, great weather for it, so things worked out well. So just thank you.
For the employee engagement events, very good. Craig, do you have anything more?
No, I've already been on my pool box.
And Steve?
I have nothing, Your Honor.
I have nothing.
With that, we'll move then to staff reports. Sharon?
Lot of time spent on 2020 budget levy, and hopefully we soon will be discussing that.
And Glenn?
Nothing more, thank you.
Dennis?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just to update MMU, the water sodium treatment project, those contracts have been awarded, everything is signed and approved, and there's a pre-construction meeting the 15th of this week. And the good news, KHC Construction, local contractor, got a $9.6 million project that they're the little bidder on that. And then the outstanding cable TV franchise agreement between the City Marshal, Spectrum Charter, I got word that Charter is recommending that it be signed out there, so Scott, hopefully we'll see something happen, something happen.
Very good, thank you, Dennis. Any update on the Commerce Park farm land lease?
It is drafted, but I don't know whether to make it a one-year lease to tie it with everyone else, or a four-year lease, so that everybody catches up with us in several years. I'm just wanting to get a better contract with the four-year, knowing that a contract, you know, they have a tie-down. So with that recommendation, I'll recommend a four-year lease then, yeah.
Makes sense? Okay. We'll move then to, you have the administrative reports for your review, you have the information items, I would bring us then to... I would bring us then to the last item, which would be to consider adjourned this meeting. Is there a motion?
Slow move.
Second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Russ. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. Motion passes. This meeting is adjourned. We will, after a short break, we will reconvene in work session for review of the budget.